He might be busy. Depending on what's said.
Okay, just lemon.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our last council meeting of the year. We have a very special guest here to lead us in tonight's pledge of allegiance. I would like to ask Mr. Santa Claus to come forward and if you could stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Santa. I know you have things to do this time of year, so we're gonna excuse you.
Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
And Mrs. Wilson, would you do us the honor of gracing us with the last invocation of the year?
I'll be happy to, Mayor. Would you bow with me for prayer? Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this gathering of folks intent on bringing direction to Canton, Georgia. I ask your blessings on our mayor and on each council member as they continue to take their oath of office seriously as they serve this community. Be with Brooke and me as we search for different ways to serve. And tonight during this Christmas season, I pray that all people will experience your peace. In the midst of the hustle and bustle, teach us how to slow down and enjoy the simple things you've given us. Most important, help us to remember the reason for this season. Your wonderful son sent from heaven in earthly form to bring us happiness now and beyond this life. I pray that people everywhere and here in Canton come to know him. It is in his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call our December 21st, 2023 council meeting to order. Tonight, it's our honor and privilege to recognize two extraordinary women for their public service to our city and our residents. Outgoing counselors Brooke Schmidt and Joellen Wilson. Brooke Schmidt was elected Ward Three City Council in November of 2019 and has served since 2020. She has served so well and done so many things, but among the highlights, she's chaired our economic development strategies. She's served on the Downtown Development Authority, served as Mayor Pro Tem this past year. She's championed tourism and arts development in the city, especially our public arts program. She wrote that grant application for the Railroad Street mural. She's been instrumental in having water bottle filling stations in parks and city facilities and so many, many other things during her great tenure as a city council member. Ms. Wilson was elected Ward One City Council in November 2015 and served 1990 to 2009 as well and then 2016 to the present in this past term. She's served as Mayor Pro Tem, she's chaired our transportation strategies for the city. She was instrumental in starting the city's benchmark program for the purchase of and dedication of benches and public services in honor of memory of local citizens. She represented the city in service delivery negotiations and served as the city's vote and delegate for the Georgia Municipal Association on many occasions and so many, many more contributions during her multiple tenures on city council. So, we're gonna miss both of these ladies, but as Ms. Wilson said in her invocation, we're confident they're gonna find multiple ways to serve our city and our citizens going forward. So, at this time, I also would like to personally thank Mayor Pro Tem Schmidt and Counselor Wilson for their steadfast support, unwavering commitment to fulfilling the priorities of our citizens established in the roadmap for success, their utmost integrity, and above all, their friendship. Canton's better for your outstanding leadership and vision. And at this time, I would like to ask Counselor Schmidt and Wilson to join our city manager at the podium for a special presentation. Ladies.
I think the first time that I met or got the opportunity to work with Joellen Wilson, it was 2007 and I was in Leadership Cherokee and I worked at another jurisdiction that will remain nameless that's south of us. And at that time, I was at Rhinehart and we were doing a leadership lunch and she was the leadership speaker. And at that particular lunch, she was going over the characteristics of leadership and one of the characteristics that she mentioned was happy countenance. And she said, "If you can't be happy in yourself, you'll never be a great leader." And she made the comment, she said, "There's one person in this room that I always see that has a happy countenance and that's Billy Peppers." And it just touched my heart and she's just been a wonderful friend since then. I think the first time I met Brooke Schmidt was when I had just started with the city and the HOA over at River Green wanted to meet with the city manager to talk about the odor at the sewer plant because their children that went to school at Cherokee High School didn't like that. And they had other questions about transportation. And I got to go over to the clubhouse over there and there were probably 40 residents or so that we met with. And after it was over, she said, "You did a really good job." She said, "We've got some crazy people in here who have questions sometimes and sometimes it's just good to hear them out." And little did I know, I would have the opportunity to work alongside her with her being on the city council. So, these are two really great representatives of our community, very strong leaders. As we do with all of our outgoing city council members, we have a special treat for them. We like to provide them with a rocking chair in their retirement. And the rocking chair on the back has the city's logo, it also has their name and their years of service. We did take a little bit of a liberty with Ms. Schmidt's rocking chair since she has been so instrumental in public arts. And we have included on it some of your favorite quotes from authors, poets, and I hear that you were in a play one time, so there might be a line on there as well. But we wanted to present these to you tonight in appreciation from our staff and from everybody on Team Canton.
Okay, ladies, back to work, back to work. Okay, moving right along. In consideration to prove tonight's agenda, I'd like to make a few comments and then make a couple amendment considerations. Over the last several years, the city council has heard concerns from residents about the density of zoning for residential projects and not having their voices heard as part of the development process. Last year, the city updated the public hearing process to provide residents with additional opportunities to learn about zoning cases in advance and allow more opportunities for public input. This new process requires additional notice of applications through the city's agenda process, requires applicants for rezoning to host public input meetings, requires the mailing of rezoning requests with the public input meeting information to surrounding property owners, and includes a technical report of the case to the council from staff at the meeting preceding the public hearing. In November of last year, the city council voted to institute an abeyance of the application of residential public hearings for a period of one year. During this time, the council had very specific items that it wanted to review and update to address our residents' concerns about growth and to ensure the best quality of future development possible for our city. We stated we would not lift the abeyance until these items had been thoroughly reviewed and addressed, and we have been discussing them repeatedly in our meetings over the past 13 months. These items included a revisit of the city's housing study, which updated with using updated census data as the previous study was completed in 2019, completion of the citywide transportation master plan, drafting the city's five-year update to the comprehensive plan, start of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the nearing completion of Phase One of the Water Pollution Control Plant Project to increase sewer capacity. And last, but not least, a comprehensive review and update to the city's existing zoning categories and map. The last review and update was almost a decade ago when the UDC was adopted. As some of you may know, this council recently did a comprehensive review and update to our Unified Development Code. In reviewing the zoning categories, the council wanted to see how to streamline the process for individual infill housing while also removing conflicting categories that could lead to non-compatible land uses. In doing so, the council had a conversation about having a basic residential zoning category that would allow residential development to be a less dense standard as compared with most residential lots throughout the city. The conversations led staff and the city attorney to draft an R zoning category, which is an average lot size of 10,000 square feet or roughly a quarter of an acre. Since the map was advertised along with the public hearing, we've received a lot of feedback from the community. This is exactly what public hearing should do, facilitate feedback. As you know, tonight is the last regular meeting scheduled for this particular council to take action on this or any particular items that have been discussed as part of our roadmap initiatives over the past four years. Had no one given feedback, the council could have acted on this item instead of kicking the can down the road to the next council. However, given the amount of public feedback and desire to have more conversations regarding the nuances of the zoning updates, is my recommendation to council that the agenda item for the public hearings be amended to simply be a public hearing without further discussion or potential action at this meeting. There are several reasons I would like to remove discussion and possible action for the public hearing agenda items. One, the council that could discuss these items tonight would not be the council to act on them in January or later. Two, the residents that have given feedback to date through direct correspondence to counselors have requested additional time to discuss options and look at areas specifically zoned as R4, R15, R20, and R40. We've heard you and we've listened. Three, the city has a new community development director, Mr. Kevin Turner, and we should value his expertise and input to help craft the new zoning map. Four, although I suggest removing discussion and action from the public hearing items tonight, I propose we advertise and hold additional public hearings on these items once additional options and solutions have been explored and discussed by the incoming council and staff. On a personal note, I'd also like to add that I am sitting in this seat tonight as a direct result with issues of Canton's zoning categories and maps. As those of you who have lived in the historic East Main Street neighborhood for a while may recall, we had serious issues many years ago due to errors and inconsistencies in Canton's residential zoning ordinance and map. That issue came close to allowing commercial development in our historic residential neighborhood. Some of the newer residents in the area may not know that I helped organize and lead the campaign to keep East Main Street residential, even after we were told by the mayor and council at the time that it was a done deal due to the city's errors. We did not give up, however, and after a year-long challenge, we were successful in protecting the sanctity of our historic residential neighborhood. Because of that battle, I urged my neighbors to remain engaged and attentive to what was happening at City Hall. And my friends and neighbors, in return, encouraged me to run for city council to help represent their best interests. That's what I've been attempting to do since I was elected in 2014, and nothing has changed when it comes to our roadmap tenet of creating great neighborhoods, especially my own. I know it's easy to be skeptical these days and government does not always live up to one of Canton's other guiding principles of leading with excellence. But I can assure you that I am no Scrooge and no member of this hard-working and committed council or staff has a die-hard, secret plan to the story I've established neighborhoods. The reality is quite the opposite. With your help, input, and a little bit of trust along the way, we will continue to co-create the coolest small town in America. Now, I would like the council to consider the following amendments to tonight's agenda. Removal and discussion of possible action from the public hearing items A and B and an addition of Old Business Item E, discussion and possible action of extending the abeyance for accepting applications for public hearings on residential properties for 90 days. Are there any additional amendments to tonight's agenda? Further comments or a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to remove Items 6A, 6B, and E from tonight's agenda. Second.
Okay, is that a motion to remove those items or just discussion and possible action?
Discussion and possible.
Okay.
Remove from the agenda.
Okay. And does that motion include adding the discussion of extension of the abeyance? Or is that additional motion?
If Brian wants to add it to his motion, he can, he don't have to.
Discussion on E, correct?
Yes. Discussion and possible action have been.
Well, your motion would be to amend the agenda to add it as an item.
I'd just say we table all three, all three, 6A, 6B, and E and remove from the agenda.
You were saying remove the thing that's not on there yet.
Oh, okay. I just said.
6A and 6B, you're removing discussion and possible action.
Correct. That's the only motion I'm.
That's what I thought. That's all you were, that's all you wanted to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. And Sean seconded that motion, so let's have a vote on that motion. All members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for that motion. Is there a separate motion to add Item Old Business E to discuss extension of the abeyance?
I'll move to add discussion of the abeyance and possible action on that Item E under New Business.
Old Business.
I mean, Old Business.
Of a motion, is there a second on that motion?
Do you have a question before? The term would be 90 days, is that correct? Or?
Yeah, and we can.
Until the issues are resolved.
Until the issue's resolved and we can discuss that under that item if we add it to the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for a motion. Any other additions? Or motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
Motion and second, all members in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay. All members voted for the motion. Okay. Next, moving to guests and visitors. To have a recognition, early we had a reception prior to this meeting for our outgoing council members, but also for employee, Ms. Wanda Floyd, who is our utility billing manager. Ms. Floyd, are you still with us tonight? Stand and be recognized. Ms. Floyd is retiring on December 29th and she has served the city for 26 years from 1997 to 2023. And I think Mr. Peppers has something to present to you, Ms. Floyd.
Thank you for your 26 years of wonderful service to our city.
If I could just have one moment of personal privilege here.
Please do.
Most people might wonder what a utility billing manager does. Wanda actually started off with us in the building department, among other job duties. And when the city went through a software conversion a while back, several years back, 2011, we had lots of issues with utility bills. And she stepped into the role of handling that and getting it straightened out for the city. And now we have 9,500 utility bills a month, some odd, roughly, 9,000 accounts, almost 10,000 accounts. So, a lot of work goes into that. Wanda's also one of those people at City Hall that you can go to for background, history, and among other things, if you talk to anybody who's worked with her, she also has a happy countenance. She's a happy person. And so, we're very excited about her being able to retire and get time to spend with family and we really do appreciate the hard work she's provided to the city. She will definitely be missed among our team, but we know that we will see her around. So, thank you very much, Wanda.
Okay. Moving right along, we'll move into our public hearing. We are, since this is the proposed Unified Development Code amendments and the map, we're gonna do this as one hearing and also we've removed discussion and possible action. So, we will basically just be hearing your comments tonight. And this is public hearing for Item A, Public Hearing on Proposed Unified Development Code UDC Amendments and Public Hearing on Proposed Zoning Map Amendment. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you have already stated, this is the public hearing portion that is required for these amendments and adoption of the new zoning map that would be as a result of these amendments if they are approved at a later date. Now, the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the City of Canton Unified Development Code to delete zoning categories R4, R15, R20, R40, and to redesignate these categories as R10. Also, to provide changes to the R10 to allow variances from development standards with master plan approval, to delete RA6 category, to delete NC zoning category, to amend Chapter 105 by replacing Board of Zoning Appeals with Board of Appeals and BZA with BOA, to amend Table 102-4 by replacing the P, which stands for permitted, with a C, which is conditional, in the CBD column for townhouses to make that a conditional use. To also amend Chapter 105 or 104.05A to allow cottage housing in the central business district. A copy of the ordinance has been provided to you that lists all of the changes where the affected zoning categories would be removed from the UDC. The second portion of the public hearing is the adoption of the zoning map. Again, as I've stated previously, the amended zoning map would be a result of deletion of the zoning categories, combinations of others, and the, well, that's it for the zoning map. So, I guess that is what we're here just to have the public hearing for tonight and as has already been discussed, there will be no action, just taking comments in from the concerned citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Yes, in addition to the hearing tonight, we have received a lot of comment and input and again, that's what we're here for tonight. And we have, at this point, I will open the public hearing. We have two citizens signed up to speak. So, if I call your name, if you'd just please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly and speak into the microphone clearly. Mr. Bob Banks?
Good evening. My name is Bob Banks. I live at 810 East Main Street. A heartfelt thanks to our council for hearing your citizens. Mayor, that was a great recap of how the process currently works, seems very straightforward and has served us well. So, thank you for recapping that for everyone to hear for the record. I hope we'll continue to see that work in our best interest for the city, but especially Sandy and Sean and Brian for last Thursday afternoon, taking time out of your day to meet with the citizens and hear what we had to say. Thanks, a heartfelt thanks indeed. Brooke and Joe, we'll miss seeing you up front. Thanks for your service and being good stewards to the city. Thank you. Merry Christmas to everyone. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Raj Paul Segu?
Raj Paul Segu, 820 Topaz Valley. Mayor, council, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just want to say thank you guys for moving this to next year to allow for possible discussion for this further. I think there might be some unintended consequences on the commercial aspect, especially in our East Main corridor, but I'm excited to have some extended opportunity to talk to you. So, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Thank you. And at this point, we will close the public hearing and we've removed discussion and action from that, so we will move on into our business meeting. You have in your packet the draft minutes from our December 7th meeting. Do we have any corrections, additions, or motions? Do we have any corrections, additions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. We have no informational items this evening. Are there any announcements? Ten minute public input. We have Mr. Thomas Weaver.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Bailey Road here in Canton, Georgia. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if it should meet with your approval, I would invite you to present attention to a matter that has transpired between the Cherokee County government and the Cherokee County School District in regards to the land swap agreement that both of those governments recently undertook in regards to the former fire station property that the city formally controlled prior to leasing it over and, and swapping that with the county for different properties here in the city. This is of no bearing to council now. However, I have professionally approached the city's administration to see if members of Team Canton, by and through the office of the city manager, will be willing to approach the council, not only to the benefit of each council member who is here and seated, but also to the benefit of any other future council member or members who may be in the room. Early next year, to consider the matter of interest to myself is, as existing precedent here has already been established, the council has been gracious enough to adopt the school safety zone maps for those school district properties that are located geographically within the city limits of Canton. Because of this land swap trade and the newly created district property annexation and acquisition by the Cherokee County School District at their Frank R. Petruzziello Educational Services Complex, that would require revision of the map that the Canton City Council here, through yourselves, prior to the comments tonight, has chose to adopt. So this is not of interest now, it's not on the agenda now. However, I would ask that council, not only for the benefit of the seated members who are going to be here next year, but also, and again, for any member or members who may be in the room, who will become seated after the beginning of the new year, that this be something that you look out for. And again, I will work in cooperation through the office of the city manager to ensure that the matter is professionally addressed before the council and the mayor, as appropriate, based on the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. We have four items on tonight's consent agenda. As usual, I will read these items. If anyone would like any of these items to be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion, be happy to do so. Item A, approval of the proposal from Kekan Wood for professional services associated with the North Canton Cottage Village. Item B, approval of proposed prefabricated bathroom installation at Etowah River Park Amphitheater. Item C, approval of proposed prefabricated bathroom installation at Bowling Park. And item D, approval of twenty twenty-four council meeting dates. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Moving into old business, item A, discussion and possible action on annual update to capital improvement plan and five-year short-term work plan for impact fees. Ms. Anderson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. At the November sixteenth meeting, this item was approved to be transmitted to DCA and ARC for review and comment. Review and comment period ended December fifteenth. There were no comments, so no changes are needed to, to be made to this impact fee update. And so this item is before you again for adoption.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson or any discussion?
I'll move to approve the CIE annual update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item B, discussion and possible action on work order management system for Public Works. Ms. Pendley, welcome.
Good evening. I am here looking for possible action on a work order management system for Public Works. I spoke last council meeting, just a quick recap. Back over the summer, we started looking for a more efficient work order system for the Public Works Department. Within finding, with, with our findings, the work order systems were between a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we weren't too happy with some of the things that they offered because they didn't necessarily link in with our current GIS system, our mapping system, which is something that was very important to us. So within doing some research, we reached out to GIS, to Interdev, and they pulled some information for some other cities on work order management systems along with some items that we had told them that were important to us and created kind of like a mock work order system, make sure that's kind of what we wanted. So I'm here tonight looking for action over this. Interdev came back with thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars for the actual work order system. And then with Esri, we would need twelve of the licensing through Esri so we can use their dashboard, which is an additional sixty-six hundred dollars. So that's what we're looking for tonight. And I did want to clarify a couple of my numbers from last meeting. So last meeting, I kind of went over a few numbers with some of the things that Public Works is currently doing. And, and I, I know just from pulling some of these numbers, they're not a hundred percent correct, and it just made it even more aware to me, some of the efficient, we need a little bit more of an efficient system. So with bulk, so far this year, with bulk items, I pulled eleven, we've done over eleven hundred bulk item pickups. For yard debris bags, not work orders, for an actual, for actual bags, I did a, an average. Right now, we're at sixty-eight hundred bags for the year. For brush and leaf work orders, I have over eighteen hundred. Those are just a couple of the numbers. We also have, you know, plenty of stormwater potholes, things like that, that we do through Public Works as well. So I think that's it. Oh, also, Ms. McGrew had asked last council meeting if we would own the, the data and the information from the system. And I did confirm that with Interdev. We had a meeting with them last week, and all the data, all that would be ours. It belongs to the city. Thank you. If you all have any questions or?
Thank you. And there was a question that came up last meeting about maintenance as well.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And I was just going to say, we had, when we met with Interdev, one of the things we talked about was the fact that, you know, we already have a contract with them for GIS services and IT services. And we just asked them to come up with a billable rate, an hourly rate, so that if we need maintenance on the system or training on the system, we're paying for that as part of an hourly rate instead of a separate contract. And so I think they quoted us a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
An hour, yes.
Which is in line with what we pay for other services through them.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Pendley? Ms. Wilson?
If there's no discussion, Mayor, I'd like to first thank Kelly for all the hard work. I can't imagine taking care of all those work orders by yourself. So anything we can do to make the department more efficient, I'm all for it. So I'll make a motion that we purchase the work order management system for Public Works.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Item C, discussion and possible action on proposed special event policy and application. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Almost a couple of months ago, I brought before y'all a revised special event policy along with the special event application. I left it with y'all to review and ask any questions, formulate any questions that you may have. You have it again before you tonight for possible action. If you don't mind, I'll give a quick summary. The gist of some of these changes on our special event policy deals with the deposits. We want to make sure that everybody that comes and has a special event with the city, their deposit covers some of the potential costs of the city, whether it be personnel, whether it be equipment rented, et cetera. So that's some of the significant changes. And to do that, to do that appropriately, we divided up these special events into three levels. First level, having expected attendees under a hundred individuals. Level two, one hundred to five hundred. Level three is five hundred above. And then on a level three event, we're going to sit down with the applicant, with the event host, or event sponsor, I'm sorry, and be able to work through some of the costs that they project so that we can make sure that the deposit covers that. So you have it in front of you. If you have any additional questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. We have Adam Dotson, our Parks and Rec Manager, he's here tonight as well, so he can answer some questions if you need to. But again, we're going to be asking for this to be approved tonight, so it can go into effect January first.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any questions from Mr. Ingram? I know we've discussed this and gone through this a couple of times. Mr. Waterman?
Move to approve the special event policy and application as proposed.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item D, discussion to amend the resolution of support from the City of Canton to the Canton Housing Authority for a two-point-eight million loan to the Ship Street community. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, thank you again. Early in twenty twenty-two.
I can't hear you really well.
Yes, ma'am. Early twenty twenty-two, Mayor and council approved a resolution of support to the Canton Housing Authority in the amount of two-point-eight million dollars. This opened up the idea to allow for a loan, a twenty-year loan with a rate of two-point-six-three percent to the Canton Housing Authority, should they, should they elect to redevelop the Ship Street property. About a month ago, the Canton Housing Authority and Mr. Paul Robinson with Sepia Transformation Partners came to us and they asked for an amendment on that. They plan on closing on their loan and start construction February first of next year. And a couple of things they're asking for is to, one, for the council to consider increasing the term of that loan from twenty years to thirty years. And then also to abate any permit fees. Now, they also mentioned abating impact fees, but upon analysis on this project, I don't believe they're going to overall increase the unit. So I don't think the impact fees, there will be any additional impact fees. But there will be approximately, based on initial estimates, about a hundred fifty to two-hundred thousand dollar fees in, for permitting, land disturbance permitting, construction permitting, et cetera. So to summarize again, they're asking for an extension, a change in the terms from twenty years to thirty years, and then the abatement of those permitting fees. Mr. Paul Robinson, he's with us here tonight. I've asked that he attend in case you all have any questions that he may can answer. So if it's amenable to Mayor and council, and you all have any questions, I'd ask that he come up and be able to answer those for you.
Okay. I think we have discussed this, and obviously, the loan's not closing, the, is not closing February first. I think what I would like to suggest to do is that we ask our city manager to meet with the Canton Housing Authority, their attorney, and our staff who's appropriate to sit down and discuss this, these amendments to the original loan, and come back to council at one of our meetings in January to make recommendations to councils how we should proceed on this issues and, and make recommendations on how to move forward on this, if council is in agreement with that. Does it sound good to everyone? Mr. Pepper, is it?
Yes, yes. And I, in fact, I had a conversation with Mr. Robinson. We've, we've been in communication with the Housing Authority as well. We'll, we'll expedite those conversations.
Great, thank you. I think that'll help us streamline this conversation. It's a lot of things to consider, and I think that'll help us move forward on this and with the information we need to make this decision, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Item E, the agenda item we added is discussion and possible action on extending the abance for accepting applications for public hearings on residential properties for ninety days. As council is aware, we did extend the abance through the end of December. We felt confident, at least on the city side, that we could get the updates done to the zoning. Of course, it's before we had all the feedback from citizens on this. But as I covered in my remarks, when we put the abance in place, we listed all the items we wanted to accomplish and review and update. And we've done all those. I want to commend council and staff for the hard work. It was a lot to do in, in thirteen months, and we've got all that done. And the zoning updates and comprehensive review of those, as I mentioned, we have not had a comprehensive review and update to our zoning category ordinances in, in, in a decade. And obviously, it's important to do that. And that was the reason for having the abance in the first place, again, to, to move forward with, with quality development and, and, and growth. And so since we are going to be looking at the zoning in greater detail and the incoming council will make those decisions on, on how to make those updates to zoning, I think we need to look extending that abance for another, I suggest, ninety days, of course. And we, with the caveat that if we come and approve update to zoning, prior to that ninety days, that it would be lifted as, as soon as the zoning updates are, are approved by, by, by council. But right now, the abance is, is set to expire, I guess, the end of this month, so. Is that correct? Anything to add?
Mr. Mayor, there's no discussion. I will move to extend the residential advance for ninety days or until the zoning updates are approved by the council.
Okay.
Prior.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. New business, we have two items. Item A, discussion and possible action on resolution to authorize check signers for the City of Canton bank accounts. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor and council. With the retirement of one of our longtime employees. Slash Jean? She is one of the individuals that has signature authority over our checking accounts. We're looking, we need to replace her with another team member. We're recommending a resolution to change this authorized signatures. You have a copy of that resolution in front of you. The person that will be replacing her will be replacing her duties as well, and that, that's Mr. John Warwick. He's been with the city for six years. John Warwick's been with the city for six years, and I believe this is a good selection. So if Mayor and council has any questions that we can answer, more than happy to do so. But we will be asking for action tonight because the last date for the retiring team member is December twenty-ninth.
Any questions for Mr. Ingram?
If there's not any discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. John Morris to be our new check signer.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. And item B, discussion and possible action of, on appointment of chief solicitor for municipal court. Ms. Fitz, welcome.
Good evening. Staff is asking for the council to consider approving, appointing Jeff Frusbridge as our chief solicitor for twenty twenty-four. And then he would nominate a slate of solicitors for municipal court to be approved in January.
Thank you, Ms. Fitz. And this is an annual appointment, is that correct? And this is an annual appointment, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Fitz?
Make a motion.
Mr. Waterman?
Move to appoint Jeff Russbridge as the chief solicitor for municipal court effective January 1st.
Yes, sir.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Fitz.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. First of all, I would like to recognize Kelly Pennley. She was chosen as our November team member of the month, and she happens to be here. So we are excited to have her. She was nominated by her peers and selected by her peers. She's always helpful. She's always pitching in on other projects with other individuals, going above and beyond to get the details that need to be answered on projects. So we appreciate her being our team member of the month. I do want to give you an update on our search for our police chief. That posting has been made. The recruitment brochure was put together. Just to give you a little bit of background on that, Alan Reddish and the Mercer Group did some extensive background information. We did a survey with all of our staff at the police department to get information from them that could be used in creating the section of the recruitment brochure related to challenges and opportunities in the department. There were some interviews that occurred with staff and leadership, talking about the ideal candidate or traits of a candidate that went into that. That particular brochure went live, I believe it was on Sunday, and will stay live until January the 19th. So all applications will go directly to Mr. Reddish and his team. We do have a link for that on our city website and are pushing applicants to go that direction. We also have the appointment of Captain John Lummis as our interim chief. John's here with us tonight. Captain Lummis has been with us for a number of years, and I had the opportunity to sit down a couple of weeks ago with all of our, oh, there's Christmas Pete, I'm sorry. I'm not used to seeing the bright lights over here, so I apologize. But I had the opportunity to sit down with all of our captains and lieutenants. I've sat down with the chief and the deputy chief over the last month and talked with all of them over a variety of things, and it was unanimous among that group that John should be the interim chief during that process. Of course, we hate to see our current chief retire, but after a long public service career, he deserves the ability to go and enjoy as camper and a grandbaby coming in too, so we're very excited for him. And then, of course, our deputy chief will be retiring the 1st of February, and he also has a long career in law enforcement. We're very proud of him, but we understand that John's going to do a good job for us in our interim capacity. We have a great team over there. We're doing great jobs getting our positions filled over there, so we're very excited about that. But as I said to our team over there, and I'll say to you, I'm going to be transparent as I can through the entire process. I think that's very important for you as the city council. I think it's very important for our team and the police department. Last thing I wanted to mention to you are some updates on our holiday hours. Of course, city hall and our city offices will be closed next Monday and Tuesday for the Christmas holidays. Will be closed again on Monday, January 1st, for the New Year's holiday. We will have council meeting on the 4th. We will have a reception from 5:00 to 6:00 for incoming council members, and then we will have swearing-in ceremonies for them that night. And we have a wonderful team here. I've had an opportunity over the last few weeks to get to talk to just about everybody. I appreciate their hard work, you know. A lot of people don't see what goes on behind the scenes. I can tell you, for example, that when it relates to a Christmas parade, it's all hands on deck. And when it starts raining and you got to pick up the candy in the street, that's a lot of work that goes into it. Or as one of our officers in Alawaka got to be the reindeer and lead the parade through downtown, this is the first time he got to do that, and he did an awesome job with that. We've had a week this week where we've really celebrated with our team. We've had some fun activities, maybe wore a few tacky things. But it is the holiday season, and we're very thankful for you, and I'm very thankful for the team that we have here. We have some great people, and we do serve a great community. It takes the residents, it takes the businesses, it takes the volunteers, it takes this team to make everything work, and we've got a good one. So I appreciate each one of y'all. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Is the chief still in the building?
Pardon?
Is chief still in the building?
Is the chief still here? He's already left for the...
All right, I'll see him later.
You have a question for Mr. Peppers? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Snazzy jacket you got on there. And I just want to follow up on Mr. Peppers and thank everyone, our staff and our team, especially our council for your leadership for the year. And it's been a great, great year. Everyone always talks about how great Canton looks during the holidays, and it looks like a Hallmark movie, and we are a Hallmark movie. They always start out with a lot of drama at the beginning, you know? But they usually always have a happy ending. So glad we are having a happy ending here in Canton, and I want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, whatever you celebrate, whoever you celebrate with, I hope it's joyful, healthy, and safe. And again, thanks to this team for your hard work and continued efforts to move our citizens' roadmap forward. Again, thanks to Ms. Wilson, Ms. Schmidt, for your wonderful tenure on our council, your leadership and friendship, all that you have done for me, for this council, for our team, and most importantly, for our citizens. You'll be missed, but we know where to find you, and we'll keep you busy, so. But to everyone, to especially our citizens, have a wonderful holiday, and we will see you next year, so, if not before. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, so.
So moved.
Second.
I like that motion and second there, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Merry Christmas, everyone.